I'm living proof of the squeaky wheel theory.
Yes, you are squeaky. We hear you.
This should certainly overcome my whispering problem, huh? Christina, you want me to keep testing it till you get the gain right? Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay.
Who was the... Uh huh. How's he doing? Good though.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, it's May 19th at 6:30 PM. Counsel, when I call your name, please say "here" or "present." Mayor Maxton.
Here.
Councilmember Stroop, not present. Councilmember Elizondo.
Here.
Councilmember Bliss, not present. Councilmember Kerner.
Here.
Councilmember Parker.
Here.
Councilmember Menchow.
Present.
With five members of council present, a quorum is declared.
Thank you, Christina. And would everybody please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everybody for coming to tonight's council meeting. As a reminder, we are live streaming the meeting tonight. We will have people that will come up and speak as part of a "Speak to Council." What I would ask is, anybody that wants to speak tonight, would you please use the podium and the mic? As part of live streaming, we need to make sure that we capture all of the sound over the mic, or it doesn't come over the live stream. If you do want to come up and speak, for anybody, for residents, if you please give your name, and whether or not you're a Fair Oaks Ranch resident or not, and for staff or any of the members that are here, please state your name and what position that you're speaking from. With this, we'll move on to citizens to be heard. We have two individuals that signed up tonight to speak as part of Citizens to Be Heard. And first, I have Mr. Levi Garrett and Charles Valdez. Are y'all tag teaming?
Yeah, we're gonna come together. Counsel, I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you guys. Just want to introduce myself. My name is Levi Garrett. This is my associate, Charles Valdez. We're with Frontier Waste Solutions. We're a solid waste service provider. We are... We have about 12 locations throughout the state. Locally, we have San Antonio and San Marcos. And with your solid waste contract coming to an end in September, just want to make it known that should you be dissatisfied with Republic for any reason, and were to put it out for a request for proposals, that we would... We are both eager and ready to provide a proposal. We are currently the franchise hauler for about just over 30 cities in the state of Texas, and we'd really like to show you what we can do for you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for being here tonight. And Ms. Sharon Brimhall. Ms. Brimhall, how are you tonight?
Good evening. My name is Sharon Brimhall, and I live on Fair Oaks Parkway. I'm speaking tonight based on what I saw when I got my 2022 tax bill this year. I live in Bear County. There are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 taxing entities on my bill, excluding the Burney Independent School District, which has, of course, has the highest tax rate. The next highest tax rate on this bill is Fair Oaks Ranch, at .3518. That is higher than Bear County, at .27633. That's higher than University Health System, at .27623. That's higher than Community College District, and that's higher than Bear County Flood and Road. I was shocked that our tax rate was that high. We're a city of 10,000, and I think that's way too high. That's why I'm here tonight. But I understand there's been some discussions that I missed about raising the exemption that the cities had in place since 1988. I'm not sure why it's taken like 2 or 3 meetings to discuss this. That's a no-brainer. We need to raise the exemption. And also include the, whatever it is, about the 10% if it goes over a certain valuation. That needs to be done right away. I wanted to see what my house was appraised at by Bear County back in 1991 when it was built. I'm not that techy. I didn't have time to look it up. But back in 2018, about the time I moved in, it was appraised at $382,320. Four years later, in 2022, it's appraised at $511,450. And I think that's clear that I don't see how the city can be short on money when you have surpluses sitting out there. And I think you should do the citizens a favor by honoring our wishes and making things easier for us. As we all know, there's inflation going on, gasoline tie. We're not sure our economy's gonna last another 6 months. That's another thing to keep in mind when you're considering these things. I know that governments do not generate income. They spend money. And usually, it's OPM. That's other people's money, and that's the taxpayers' money. And I would appreciate some fiscal restraint, just in general. The object of governments, where they realize they're not, is to grow. Governments grow. You need more services. You need more employees. Oh, we have more employees. Now we need more office space. Now we need a community center. Actually, to be honest, I'm shocked when I call City Hall on occasion, because I get a recording. And then I press a button, or whoever to talk to, somebody that I want to speak to, and I get a recording there. The city would be well, do well, to hire one or two very experienced front-office people, receptionists slash office managers, that could answer many of the questions that citizens have when they call in. In such a lovely city as Fair Oaks, I'm shocked that when I call the City Hall, I get a recording. I'd like to speak to a person that could probably help me right then and answer whatever question I have. Just a suggestion. Also, this is kind of off-topic, but everybody keeps saying they want to keep the semi-rural atmosphere of Fair Oaks. The way you do that is not let high-density development come in. I know developers want to build. They want to make money. The city wants tax revenue. Got it. But if somebody wants to come in and build 10,000 houses on 10 acres, that's an exaggeration, of course, but that's a no. I really think that the smallest lot in this city from now on should be half acre. I think an acre would be better, but a half acre would do. Two houses per acre. Because when all these people come in with high density, then it's, oh, infrastructure, oh, traffic, oh, roads, yeah? If the developers don't want to follow Fair Oaks rules, we aren't looking for people to move in. We have very nice neighbors as it is, and it's gonna grow anyway. But if developers want to come in with high density, they don't follow the rules, then they can go to Burney, they can go to Comfort, they can go to Kerrville. Because somebody will want to come in and develop. Anyway, I appreciate your consideration, particularly, I got a little off-topic, but particularly about the exemption raising. That's a no-brainer. And I appreciate y'all's consideration and approval of such thing. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. That was all the individuals that I had signed up on the roster to speak tonight. Is there anybody else here this evening that did not get an opportunity to sign up that would like to speak? Okay, I also have a letter that was submitted and asked to be read as part of Citizens to Be Heard. And the letter is from Amy Higgins, who is a Fair Oaks Ranch resident. And her letter reads, "Thank you for the ability to address City Council via written format. I've looked over this long study proposal to add shoulder space to Ammon Road due to safety concerns. I'm grateful we are looking into infrastructure concerns within Fair Oaks Ranch. This is quite a big study, and I'm asking, who spearheaded this exact study? We sure do need a similar study about flooding in the back 40 that strands and traps dozens of families multiple times a year in our homes due to impassable roads. I am wondering why Fair Oaks Ranch would want to spend so much of our infrastructure tax dollars so far away from the center of our population to widen or soften a curve and not address yearly flooding instead? Is it to help Burney push through the Kendall County Gateway in the future? If this is what Fair Oaks Ranch is planning on doing, or even imagining, I respectfully ask for the city manager and the city council to hold several town hall formal meetings, so we, collectively as a town, can become educated on a master plan. The gateway loop is not something to push through without careful consideration. As I read through this planned study, I can't help but be alarmed at the ethical conflict of claiming a death was caused by the curve on Ammon when in fact, that death was directly in front of my home on Silver Spur, 5 miles away from that bend and a different road. I am grateful to the city council for all their volunteer hours. Most sincerely, Amy Higgins." With that, we'll move on to presentation items for tonight. And for council, item 5 was to be presented by Mike Garza. And he is not going to be here till later. Does anybody have a problem if we move this till after the consideration and discussion items? And with that, then we'll start off with the annual street maintenance plan with Julio.
Good afternoon, council. Julio Galunga, Assistant PoliWorks Director. So just wanted to give you a quick update on the annual street maintenance plan. As y'all know, our GEC and us worked on this previous years, kind of put everything together. So just wanted to bring you an update on where the money's going. So as y'all know, did slurry seal last year. That's what we did out there in Deer Meadows area. It was our first time doing it. It worked out really well. For, just a quick reminder, a slurry seal is an application of mixture of water, asphalt, emulsion, aggregate, very small crush rock, and additives to the existing asphalt pavement surface. So it usually looks like a new road laid down. So worked out really well. Was great working with the contractor. So there's a couple other things on there about emulsion with aggregates as part of the mixture, the placement of the mixture of existing pavement is a seal of the pavement surface, so you know, only certain roads are gonna get this treatment. I'm not sure why it jumped to that slide. Sorry. Okay. Well, I mean, I can continue on if y'all like either way. It's just some definitions on the stuff that we're gonna be doing, so as the slides come up, I can go ahead and present them. But we have Fog Seal. So Fog Seal is a single application, typically light emulsified application onto the existing surface. This type of maintenance treatment can be evaluated to renewed weatherize, oxidated asphalt surfaces, and improve the surface appearance, seal minor cracks, surface voids. So Fog Seal just gonna be applied through... The way it works is a motion truck just comes out, sprays down, and then you allow time for it to dry. So usually pretty inexpensive. So Millen Overlay was the third object that we... Third type of treatment we're doing this year. So Millen Overlay is a street rehabilitation technique that requires removal of the top layer, typically about 2 inches of street by grinding with a large milling machine. After the top layer is removed, a new layer of asphalt is put on top. So... Okay, okay. So Fog Seal, just so everyone sees it, I mean, you can kind of see where it's been applied. Lighter surface, got the darker surface now where the Fog Seal's been applied. It'd be a pretty thin layer. If you want to jump over to the next slide, Christina, that'll be the Millen Overlay that I just discussed. So Millen Overlay, we're gonna be doing that on Grand Turf. We'll be starting that actually here pretty soon. So I've already spoke with the residents out there, and we'll be going out there with the machine. We'll grind off about 2 inches and then relayer it. So... You want to jump onto the next, Christina? This one is just a quick reminder of kind of what the ratings look like. You know, you got an 85 to 100. Looks like a great street. Go a little further down, 70 to 85 range. You got cracks and stuff starting to appear. 56 to 70, it's fair, but you got alligatoring going on. That's what we're referred to in that bottom-left picture. Of course, 41 to 55 becomes poor, and then pavement conditions just continue to fail after that. So you always want to go out and retreat the roads. So just a quick references to the roads we're doing and the scoring. Go ahead and jump to the next slide. So that slide there shows the south side of streets that we're gonna be doing this year. So those streets, you can tell they're rated pretty high. You got 70s, 80s in there. We just chip sealed these streets, maybe about 3, 4 years ago. We're gonna come in here, we're gonna Fog Seal them. That's gonna lock in any of the loose aggregate that's still there and seal in any of the cracks. So those scores will shoot up. This would be a pretty easy process there on the Fog Seal. And then on the next slide, you have this method is, you know, conditions ranging anywhere from 56 to 70, depending on where you're at. This method here, we're gonna be doing the actual micro-surfacing, so we'll be coming in, putting down a thin layer. We'll be doing that at the Parkway, and then coming back, restriping, putting down buttons and everything there as well. There's a couple of areas in the city we're gonna be touching, and like I mentioned earlier, the Millen Overlay, that's really only gonna be done on Grand Turf, so it's a small section. You can go ahead and jump to the next one, Christina. So RPMs and safety, that's one of the big things that, you know, we talked about a little while back. So we're looking at going ahead and putting RPMs, which are the raised pavement markers, those little yellow and blue ones. Blue, of course, gonna be for the fire hydrants. We're gonna be putting 30-foot spacers just on the straightaways, and where their curves are, we're gonna be putting 20-foot spacers. We're gonna install chevrons along Meadow Creek Trail, certain areas of Rollinkers Trail. Hopefully, start catching some people's attention there. And then we're gonna have some other signage that we're gonna be putting up as well that we're looking at. So initial roadways of Rollinkers Trail, Post Oak Trail, and Meadow Creek Trail, which was something council had asked us to go and address. So we got all that lined out this year. So these are just gonna be the regular Chevron signs. We're just gonna be going ahead and angling them out. This picture doesn't really give it too much justice, but if you're ongoing on Meadow Creek Trail, for example, you have the 2 curves that you're going through. They're kind of like an S. So we're gonna have, it's gonna look like a triangle. Basically, you'll have 2 chevrons. So coming off either side, you're gonna see these chevrons. Hopefully, they'll catch your attention, let you know the curve's coming up. We also have some golf cart signage that we're gonna be going ahead and installing. So as y'all saw, we're gonna be doing the Parkway. So at the Parkway, we're gonna go back, restripe the golf cart crossings. We're gonna put some additional signage up, so we'll be addressing that. But, and then of course, putting more RPMs and things, so it'll follow this method as well, so... I do know we have some crossings, some people, some crossing signs out on Pimlico. I mean, I could look at it and see what else we can add out there, but... Yes. But yeah, no, we'll definitely look out there at Pimlico. I do know we have some signage, but if we need to add more, then that's always something we can do in-house. So these signs are actually gonna be installed by our guys, our maintenance guys. We'll go and install them later on this year. So we'll have those chevrons and that put up. And then if we jump on over to the next slide, the annual street maintenance plan, basically, it's gonna show you where we have Rollinkers Trail. We're gonna be putting down like said, about 800 RPMs. Post Oak Trail's gonna have about 200, and Meadow Creek Trail's gonna have about 250. So there's gonna be a lot more buttons than there is now. I think if you drive down there about every 100 or so feet, so should definitely help out when it comes to traffic and making sure people stay on the straight lanes. Now we're gonna jump over to the money portion of it. If I can. Good, next one. We can go to the next one. There we go. Okay, so we've gone out for bid on the Micro Seal. That was already awarded. Same contractors last year got that contract. We're doing about $650,000. Currently looking at about the July-August timeframe. We're still trying to get them squared away. They're supposed to be coming back to do some work for Bear County and San Antonio, so I'll be working with them on their scheduling. The Millen Overlay, we actually got that scheduled for the 13th of June, so we'll start that work here soon. And then the Fog Seal, we just went ahead and had the bids come in on 5/13. Had about $174,000 is what we were looking at for the Fog Seal. So we'll be hopefully coming back to council to get that contract awarded, and maybe I can get them scheduled for June-July timeframe. And then, of course, we have the RPM, the stripings, and the chevrons. So all that's gonna be safety features, which include the golf cart crossing, street name signs, chevrons, of course, the stripings and the RPMs that we just talked about. In total, out of that million, currently I have about $86,000 contingencies, so trying to get as close as I can without going over budget. But we're gonna go ahead and try to get as much work as we can with that million dollars that we said, hey, we're gonna start improving our roads with. I don't know if I, don't think I have the slide in here, but as we mentioned in the previous presentations we gave y'all, our rating basically goes from an 84 to an 85, so we're improving the road by 1 point. So at least we're not going down. On the back ends, I did improve, and I don't have to go through all of them, but I did include the maps for the areas that we're gonna be doing, because there were some changes. The original bid for the Fog Seal did come out over, so there was some roads that were ranked pretty high that I decided, you know, let's pull those roads out. Let's try to keep it within budget, and you know, there are some patching and repairs and other things that need to be done as well. So I want to be sure that we maximize what we can get done. So just... The original bid, it was like $300,000. So yeah, there were some changes that I made. They were gonna come out and do a thicker layer of of the Fog Seal, so with the Fog Seal, you don't really need a thick layer put down. They were gonna do about a .40 application. We're going with the .26 application, and then we removed some of the streets. Notably, it's really the ones that we did with the bond work. So those streets, we have retouched already. We did some rejuve work, maybe about 2, 3 years ago on those roads. So all these roads have been touched and already been worked on a lot sooner than our previous 8-year plan, so... Yes, yeah. Yeah, these were the ones that I was most comfortable removing, so making sure we're following what the program says. Yeah, so I think part of it is, this is our first year, of course, using that Cartograph program. This is the first year we've had a million dollars to work with. So some of the stuff that, you know, inflation did hurt us a little bit, prices changed. There were some mobilization costs that were a little bit more expensive than we expected. I think now we got a better handle on it. This is our second year using the program this coming year. I'm already working on the program for next year, and I'll actually be meeting with contractors already to go ahead and start discussing it for next year, so we're kind of a little bit more prepared. But yeah, no, I feel perfectly comfortable removing these streets. I mean, I think this one right here, Triple Crown, was like in '86. So it was ranked pretty high. It's really good condition. And the other streets, of course, like I mentioned, they're pretty much brand-new roads right after we did the rejuve. The benefit with the rejuve is, they usually guarantee about a 5-year limit, so whatever you spray it at, you know, it was in 90, for example, it's gonna stay at that 90 for 5 years. So I'm actually gonna be meeting with them to bring them out here, I think, next week, going ahead and making sure we stay on track with all that, so... But, you know, the next couple of slides, if you want to go through them real quick, it's just the maps of areas that we're gonna be doing on the south side. So we got some Fog Seal work going on. That is actually Preakness and Secretariat and Rocking Horse area, so we'll be doing all that section. Yes, ma'am.
When are you doing that section?
So I'm hoping to get that going between June and July. We haven't awarded that contract yet. We'll be bringing that back to council next week, and then I can start working on scheduling for the crews.
I think what would be helpful for me is to... How often do you come and give updates?
I think the last time we gave an update was a couple months ago on this.
I think what would be helpful for me is kind of understand what's changed since the last time you briefed, and today. And then what's happening in the next couple months.
Okay.
So looks like the Millen Overlay's starting soon.
Yes, ma'am.
Which streets are those gonna be?
That is actually just gonna be Grand Turf.
Grand Turf?
Yes.
That's the only street that needs that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then what else is gonna start maybe in the next month or 2?
Hopefully, between June and July, we'll have the Fog Seal going, and that's gonna be on the south side of the city. So basically, between Deets and Fair Oaks Parkway, that section where Pimlico, Rocking Horse, Preakness, those areas, all that area's gonna be getting touched up there.
And then the striping and all the signage and all that stuff won't be done until later, right?
So right now, we're getting some clarification on the bids. The bid for the Fog Seal, which was the south side of the city, the contractor has on there that he would be putting the RPMs supposedly after, so we're verifying all that information right now. But yes, if he says, you know, yeah, we're gonna do it that same timeframe, then great, because that saves us some money. If it was maybe just he misquoted it, then we'll be bringing another contractor in to get those done right after. Yes, ma'am.
I think you already said this, but you are contacting residents in those specific areas when it's going to affect them and giving them time to prepare not be able to drive and all those other things?
Yeah, so a good example is the Millen Overlay work. We're starting on the 13th. I've actually made contact with those residents, found out some of them have moving trucks coming, so I got that pushed back so we can get the moving trucks in there. I prefer to keep those off a new road. So yeah, we're doing that, and definitely before we start any work, we'll be putting out maps and scheduling information and that, so... Yes, ma'am. Aside from that, I mean, if you want to go through the rest of the slides, Christina, it's just the rest of the maps. If y'all have any other questions, council, then I'll go ahead and step off, so... so Grant can jump up here and talk about the rest of it.
Grant Watnabi, Director of Public Works and Engineering Services. So in addition to some of the safety improvements that Julio already mentioned, including some of the raised pavement markers and the chevrons at the tight curves, we're also planning to do some school bus stop safety improvements, specifically over on Battle Intents. You can see on that overview photo, we've got two bus stops in fairly close proximity to each other, one in Sybilla View and the other on Sybilla Valley and Sybilla Run, indicated by those stars there. The primary complaint in this area is speeding and vehicles passing stop school buses, and some of the improvements that we're proposing to make will address both of these. I'll also add that as a contributing factor to speeding, it's very confusing as to what exactly the speed limit in this area is. Starting at the bottom where Battle Intents intersects with Hansel, it starts at twenty miles per hour. Does this work? All right, I'll just talk to it. So from the intersection of Battle Intents and Hansel, it starts at twenty miles per hour, and then as you come up to the three-way stop with the fairways, then it transitions to thirty miles per hour until you get across the Little Water Crossing. And then as you go up the hill and kind of come around this tight turn, it says back to twenty miles per hour, because it's a blind turn. And after you get past that blind turn, then it goes back to thirty miles per hour until you get to Keenan. So very confusing as to exactly what the speed limit in this area is, because it changes so much. All right, so one of the proposed recommendations to improve safety is to just make it a little simpler and keep that twenty miles per hour limit through its entire stretch. And that starts at the right-hand side with Hansel, and it continues through both of these subdivisions to Keenan. That's going to involve switching out a couple of signs and putting up one new sign, but fairly inexpensive. Some of the other improvements we plan to do is at both of these specific bus stops, we're going to change out some of those darker burnt-orange colored signs with some fluorescent yellow-green signs to make them a little bit more visible as exactly where those bus stops are. And for vehicles approaching both of these bus stops, we're going to put these bus stops ahead signs. So about four hundred feet north of the Sybilla View stop, we'll put a sign signifying that, and then about five hundred feet south of the Sybilla Valley and Sybilla Run bus stop, we'll put another sign indicating that there's a bus stop ahead as well. The total cost for some of these changes is about two thousand dollars, and this is going to be covered by the contingency as part of our annual street maintenance budget. Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
When is this going to start?
So it would be sometime this summer. We haven't ordered the sign yet, and we're planning to have much of our maintenance staff switch out the signs and put up the new signs, so it'll be sometime this summer.
And the change to the speed limit will be effective at the same time? We probably need to do a little advertising on that.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I believe you do. Same with new stop signs.
Some of the questions I had received and have seen just on different postings about the school bus passings have been that people are confused if a bus is at a four-way stop, do we all have to stop, or can we continue going through because it's a stop? So are we planning on doing any kind of the videos that we've done or anything that kind of explains bus four-way stops and tells residents? I mean, everybody can't claim stupid, but some are, so if we can educate, that would be good.
Yes, ma'am, I agree with that.
Anything else?
Thank you all.
Thanks, Grant. Thanks, Julio. Both of y'all. And a great opportunity to move on to the next item. We have two proclamations to present tonight, and the first is for the Public Works team. And the proclamation is the City of Fair Oaks Ranch Office of the Mayor, whereas Public Works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of the City of Fair Oaks Ranch. Whereas this infrastructure, facilities, and services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of Public Works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens and civic leaders in the City of Fair Oaks Ranch to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of Public Works and Public Works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2022 marks the sixty-second Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association and the Canadian Public Works Association, be it now. Whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff Public Works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding the importance of the work they perform. Now and therefore I, Gregory C. Maxton, Mayor of the City of Fair Oaks Ranch, do hereby designate the week, May fifteenth through the twenty-first, 2022, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and the Canadian Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our Public Works professionals and their engineers, managers, employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. And witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Fair Oaks Ranch to be affixed this thirteenth day of May, 2022. And I did want to just add on to that the importance of recognizing our Public Works employees. In my opinion, in my belief, is that what they go through is a thankless job. Because honestly, if everything is working properly, nobody calls, nobody has any complaints, or no concerns. And I know that y'all work day in, day out to ensure that you maintain a thankless job, and have done a great job for our city. We have a quality and reliable water and wastewater utility system, and as you presented tonight, we're continually focused on upgrading our roads and maintaining and ensuring that we maintain a quality infrastructure throughout our city. And then just recently, you were acknowledged for maintaining a top wastewater utility system and a wastewater utility supervisor of the year. So congratulations to y'all. And tonight, we are, we have Grant Watnabi with us and Julio Colunga, who are representing our Public Works Department. And would y'all please join me in a round of applause for all that they do. It does not go lightly, and we all recognize all that you do. The next proclamation that I have tonight is the City of Fair Oaks Ranch Office of the Mayor, whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May fifteenth as National Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which it falls is Police Week. And whereas the members of the Fair Oaks Ranch Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and the freedoms of the citizens of the City of Fair Oaks Ranch, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, the duties, and responsibilities of their police department, and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas the Police Department of the City of Fair Oaks Ranch has grown to be modern and scientific law enforcement agency, which unceasingly provides a vital public service. Now therefore I, Mayor Gregory C. Maxton, call upon the citizens of the City of Fair Oaks Ranch and upon all patriotic, civil, and educational organizations to observe the week of May eleventh, 2022, as Police Week, with appropriate ceremonies in which all of our people may join in commemorating police officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in doing so have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call upon all citizens of Fair Oaks Ranch to observe May fifteenth as Peace Officer Memorial Day to honor those peace officers who, through their courageous deeds, have lost their lives or have become disabled in the performance of duty. And this was witnessed by hand and seal this thirteenth day of May, 2022. And I just want a couple of comments about the Police Department. I've spoken about it before, and what I believe, a phenomenal job that our Police Department does for our city. And we have police, correction, Chief Mooreing here tonight representing the Police Department. Lieutenant Heda abandoned you. But number one, and their number one priority, is ensuring the safety of our residents of Fair Oaks Ranch. This is a twenty-four-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week operation that they go through. And they have continued to do this and maintain that Fair Oaks Ranch is one of the safest cities in Texas. And they do this by covering all areas of the city, and they have even continued to provide home watches for our residents during times that they're away from their homes. While doing all this and providing security to our residents, they continue to provide community activities where they integrate our police force throughout the city with our residents and providing community relations. And you've done this with multitude of events, drive around Santa Claus, the Easter Bunny, and what it has really developed is a bond where the police force has integrated themselves with the community to be a part of the community. So I think that really helps when you're trying to achieve your number-one goal of ensuring the safety and security of our residents. We see that San Antonio is showing an increase in crime. That crime is starting to come down the I-ten corridor and travel west. But still today, our police force prevails with their presence throughout this city to ensure that that crime does not come into our city. So please join me in thanking Chief Mooreing and the rest of our Police Department for all that they do. And Lieutenant Ohea showed up appropriately. We'll move on to the consent agenda tonight. We have two items on the consent agenda. First is the approval of the May fifth, 2022, regular city council meeting minutes. And the second item is the approval of the second reading of an ordinance adopting fiscal year 2021 and '22 budget amendment for the Chartwell and Dietzel Corn Intersection Project. Is there any member of council that would like to remove any item from consent to consideration and discussion? And then with that, could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
With Roy in a second.
Second.
With the motion in a second, we'll go ahead and vote on it. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm a nay on this one.
On the consent agenda?
Yeah.
So we have a four-to-one vote on the consent agenda. With four votes, we do have a majority, and the consent agenda is approved. With that, we'll move on to consideration and discussion items. And first up tonight is the consideration and possible action, approving the first reading of an ordinance amending ad valorem exemptions on resident homesteads. I'll turn it over to our city manager, Tobin Maples.
Thank you, Mayor, meeting Mayor and Council. This first item on your agenda tonight is for the consideration and possible action of the first reading of an ordinance amending ad valorem tax exemptions that the city offers to its residents. Pursuit into the Tax Code, Section eleven thirteen, the council does have the authority to adopt certain exemptions. Clarity purposes, current exemptions that we offer, five-thousand-dollar residential homestead exemption. The city offers a twenty-thousand-dollar exemption for residents over the age of sixty-five. Past few weeks, the council has considered several different options to increase exemptions, tax freezes, et cetera, not only for over sixty-five, but also for disabled qualifying persons. What's before tonight are two different agenda items. But you want to authorize that it'll start this tax year, and we'll get you to roll on unless we're removed from the city. I'd point out to the council that the staff, in addition to the directives that we got from the city council, talking about freezing the disabled, qualifying disabled residents, and that's associated with the upcoming agenda item. But regarding exemptions, the council never discussed adding an exemption for disabled as well. So if you freeze it with the next item, they won't receive any benefit this particular tax year. So we went ahead and with this first item included a proposed exemption for not only exemption for over sixty-five, but we also included the opportunity for council to adopt an exemption for qualifying disabled. Whatever their assessed value is this year, if you qualifying a tax rate will be based on that exemption. Clear? Did I confuse you? So you've never talked about an exemption for disabled. You've only talked about a freeze. So this agenda item will allow you to adopt an exemption. Want to do a freeze, that's the next item as well. So what's being proposed is an exemption for the disabled and an enhanced exemption for over sixty-five. And the way we laid out the agenda item gives the council the opportunity to plug in a five percent and/or twenty-five-thousand-dollar exemption. Greater? Or ten percent and fifty-thousand-dollar exemption, whichever's greater. And obviously, the council has the authority to plug and play any numbers you want. I've provided all the projected revenue impacts, the shifts in revenue, and the shifts in the tax burden in your location packet. I am not planning on going through the slide deck unless council has any questions. We've been through it multiple times. Packet that's available to you. Questions you have?
Sorry. So for the exemption versus freeze of the sixty-five, sorry, not sixty-five, the disabled, you said you gave us the option, but if we did the freeze on the disabled on the you gave us the option, but if we did the freeze on the disabled on the next agenda item, that would still be able to take place for this 2022?
Lock in whatever their tax bill is this year, that's what will be frozen for the following year. Round numbers, if they end up paying $1,000 this year, next year it'll be $1,000 if it were to go up to 1,500 off new rates or new appraisal. Adopt the tax freeze itself.
So to clarify that, so we would be doing an exemption and a freeze. An exemption would be applied to this year's tax bill, which would lower it, and then when it's frozen, it'll be frozen at that lower. If we don't do an exemption, it'd be frozen at the high tax bill this year without the exemption, and it'll be, they'll be at that level. Okay, thank you. And then the exemption would go away next year when the freeze comes into effect, because you don't have an exemption and a tax freeze.
Really doesn't matter because they're frozen.
Right, okay.
Tobin, we also talked about that we just have a regular $5,000 homestead exemption already in effect. Is that something that we need to consider tonight?
Council did not direct us to provide any revenue projections or ifs in that, so we didn't propose a change, but absolutely, you have the opportunity to make that.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is if we didn't take any action on it, does it just remain in effect, $5,000? Any other questions from council? Are there any questions or comments from anybody here tonight that would like to comment I was looking at the group. Would you like to comment?
West Peaper, Fair Oaks Ranch. Is it working? Just quick comment, I sent an email to council, I believe yesterday. Sorry, it took me a while to get to it. I was a little behind on meeting notes, so. But anyway, just when you, hopefully you took time to read that. I just had some issues with maybe some overs, what I perceive as overstatement in the, some of the numbers as far as the impact. I concentrated specifically on the over 65 at this time because it didn't seem like a freeze, the over 65 exemption, it didn't seem like a freeze was on the table, so I concentrated on the over 65 exemption. And just hope that you'll take that into account in your decision tonight. Thanks.
Normally, at this point, we'd go ahead and take a motion, but without the process of how we get through this. When I look at this, I look at this time of period, we've been, Mrs. Brimhall was up here, she talked about inflation. I do believe that we have a certain, certain population within our city that are probably challenged by taxes, probably even this year with increased appraisal values. I think we're at a position now that we can provide some relief to them. As I looked at this, we talked about the median home value was somewhere around 500,000 within the city. My thoughts were is that a 10% exemption would be appropriate? And with looking at that, that would work for those that were over the 500,000, but would be not as comparable or not as advantageous to those that are under 500,000. So being at the 50,000, or the 500,000 mark, 10% would be 50,000, then I would propose the 10% exemption with the 50,000 as the 10%, and then or a $50,000 exemption for residents over age 65.
A second.
I was gonna say, if that's a motion, I'll second too.
I didn't make the motion, but what I was doing is...
You proposed, so I thought that was the motion.
I got a fourth.
I did want to generate discussion so that we could get to something, but, okay, so then we do have a motion. I will make the motion, an amount equal to the greater, I move to approve the First Reading of an Ordinance amending ad valorem tax exemptions as follows, an amount equal to the greater of 10% or $50,000 for exemption for residents age 65 and older. Laura?
I seconded.
All right. For council, any further discussion?
I think to amend your motion, and add to your motion, an amount, an exemption for amount equal to or greater than 10% or $50,000 for residents qualifying as disabled. I'm adding that to your...
It was 10% and...
10% or $50,000 exemption for residents, same motion for disabled.
You need a second.
I do need a second.
I second.
Any discussion on the amended motion? Okay, we have an amended motion adding 10% and 50,000 for disabled personnel. All in favor of approving the amended motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have four-to-one for an approval, so the amended motion is approved. So now we have a motion to approve, or an amount equal to, amount equal to the greater of 10% or $50,000 exemption for residents age 65 and over, and an amount equal to the greater of 10% or $50,000 exemption for residents qualified as disabled. Do we have any further discussion on it?
Okay, I'm glad I'm sitting way over here on the end of the table. Nobody's got a clear shot at me. Can we adjust? Okay, better? So, so for the sake of being concise, I'm gonna read my notes here. So, you know, I know I'm voting against my own economic interest here, but I, doing this, because when I ran for council over six years ago, part of my commitment was to follow sound business practices in running the city. And part of that, to me, is making sure that you have a solid business case for actions that you take, for decisions that you make. Right now, I think we're considering a solution where a clear business case has not been established. This was originally bought to us because people were claiming that the Fair Oaks Ranch city taxes were putting people at risk of being displaced from their homesteads. So far, I have not seen any data presented to demonstrate that that's the case. No matter how we spend the numbers, you know, we can use different assumptions and different values and those kind of things, but at the end of the day, this is an approach that shifts the burden of city cost to other taxpayers. I think somebody earlier used the term "other people's money," and that's what that, this You know, I shared with council members, and it's, I made sure that the city secretary knew that was available to anybody else that wants to look at it, the results of some research I performed. And, you know, it indicates that where a lot of other cities have used this kind of approach, it's to really resolve issues related to people being displaced because of a lack of adequate inventory of affordable housing in a community. And that's due to factors like gentrification and other things. You know, in addition to just looking at the demographics from the U.S. Census Bureau and other things about Fair Oaks Ranch, I don't really feel that it fits the profile that's typical for people to being displaced due to those kind of factors. You know, some other findings that I got from looking at legislative information from other cities that are working with these issues, white papers and academic research relating to this topic, I found that a lot of times when these exemptions and freezes are used, they're part of a larger strategy to address shrinkage in affordable housing. We actually have a reverse situation here. You know, one of the things I hear citizens complaining about is that we're allowing, you know, more non-custom, what people are used to as a Fair Oaks Ranch resident, to be built here. Well, that has actually had the effect, if you will, of lowering the median price of our home values. So again, I just don't feel that Fair Oaks Ranch, well, let me say one other thing about history. You know, where these tactics are deployed is where you have a city that had, you know, has been around a lot longer than the 40 years Fair Oaks Ranch has been here, that has legacy homesteads that have been lived in for a long time, and you have, and I always like, have been using the example of South Town, San Antonio, where you have older homes that people have lived in for most of their lives, and then everybody decides they want to live near the high employment areas, and so they start going in there and replacing those homes with modern homes or doing major renovations, which raises those property values in those areas. We, we just don't fit that kind of profile in Fair Oaks Ranch. Every home here was built, you know, 40 years ago or newer, and are very similar kinds of houses. You know, every one of our deed covenants and restrictions in most of Fair Oaks Ranch says that this is a high-class residential area. So again, just doesn't seem like it fits that profile. I would submit that if the goal is to make housing affordable in Fair Oaks Ranch, then other approaches need to be considered. Because I don't think that increasing exemptions really does that in this case, or providing a freeze. If the goal is to lower property taxes, then we're, we're just working on the wrong side of this, this issue. If we increase the exemptions for everybody to be equitable, really what we're doing is we're reducing our tax base, and that's gonna have, if we truly believe that we need to fund the level of services that we currently are for the city, that's just gonna push out a higher tax rate when we do that. So while philosophically, I don't disagree with providing tax relief, I just don't really think that we've gone through the due diligence we need to as a council to make this decision at this time. We are using other people's money to fund these exemptions, and once we provide these, we can't take them back. So this is a very significant decision, and I just don't think the due diligence has been done yet to justify moving other people's money around in that manner. Thank you.
The other comments?
After you've done, just go ahead. No, I appreciate your comments, Roy. I have a different perspective. A lot of our decisions we make, both budget-wise and tax-related, is supposed to be a reflection of our values. And I know one of the things that I really enjoy about the City of Fair Oaks Ranch is the diversity of residents, and the number of residents that have lived here for a very long time, and live here until they pass away. And I enjoy the diversity of ages in our, in our, in our city, and anything we can do to encourage people, to allow people to stay in their homes for as long as they would like to, I think adds to the, to the flavor of our city. And I think that in keeping with what originally we did, obviously, many years ago, the council and the founding fathers of the city decided that having an exemption for over 65 was important, and we just haven't updated it since then. And really, at the end of the day, it's the same amount, if you take into account inflation since then, that, that they had back when this was originally set. So, and it's just gonna ensure that it continues to keep up with times as house values improve. So that's just my perspective of it, and I think we can absorb within our city budget as, as necessary. And as a, as a resident that will be impacted is with the tax shift, it's something I'm, I will gladly accept.
So I'll say, agree with pretty much everything Laura just said, and adding to that, and speaking of this shift idea that we're talking about here, yes, at this current point in time when we make this decision, the younger generation will, it will be shifted to them, but as I stated in the last meeting, you know, we, the founding fathers originally set a certain percentage, and while we're bringing it back to that percentage, if you think about for the 33 years it hasn't changed, we've slowly been shifting it one direction. So now we're essentially making that right, if you will, and I agree that I would like to take on amount of that burden if it means keeping more of those folks around that have the historical value and what they bring to the community, because that's, the community is what's important to me. So definitely agree with that. And then the third point I'd like to make is just, in all of this, we talked about the 5%, and it was somewhere around 26K in the first year, so we're really talking about less than 1% of our budget. And I just feel like, even with 10%, we're still gonna be under a percent, and we can, we can figure that out. And it's important to me that we do that.
I just think that this is something that we can do. It's, we don't, we're all friends, we're all neighbors, we're all citizens of the same community. However, we don't know how much the person next door, who no longer has the earning potential anymore, how things like $4 a gallon gas is affecting their daily lives. This seems to be an item for me that is something that we can get pulled together as a city. It will not set us back any, any timeline in the amount of money that we're going to be budgeting. And I don't think, to, speaking to Roy's analysis, I, I don't think we can compare where we live here to South Town. However, I do believe, and having been a caretaker for, for aging parents and aging relatives, and their banker, and, you know, realizing how much money comes in, but how much money is also going out, and what's going to be happening here with the, the new appraisals that have come out. I think people deserve a break, and I think this is something that we can absorb easily. And, yeah, we're still, we're still paying our fair share, I know that I still am, and that I think it's something that, that we need to do as a community. It's an opportunity for us to go and do something that I honestly believe is the right thing for us to go ahead and do. Thank you.
Roy?
I just, I just want to follow up, because I want to advocate for the people that are not 65. And again, I apologize to not get the research to y'all earlier, but I think when you look at it, you'll find that some of the people most being impacted by the current market basket of things that are being affected by the high rate of inflation right now are actually the families. And so I am not speaking against enabling people to stay here. I just think we're a different kind of community socio-economically, and what we're doing is we're really, you know, shifting the burden to people that are having the same struggles, the people that are still trying to raise families, that don't have the high equities in their home, you know. And, and that's just my analysis based on the census data that I looked at, and the way that, the, the information that I looked at, and how inflation is affecting different parts of the population. And so I don't want to come across as, as the grinch and being unwilling to help people like me, but I kind of equate it to, you know, some of the, the money that was distributed on... the first round of the, the COVID relief, where, you know, there wasn't any kind of needs test or anything. And, you know, it, it caused some inequities and problems in the economy. And that, that's, that's what my concern is. My concern is not to absolutely say no. I think there's some other options that we haven't explored that I came across in my research. You know, just as one example, is an approach where a homeowner that is truly on a needs basis, struggling to pay, and, and given, the data that we've been given, a $500,000 house, the Fair Oaks Ranch taxes are about $2,000 a year. On a million-dollar home, which we have a significant number of in this community, it would be twice that, $4,000 a year. And I struggle to say, you know, is some percentage of that really the difference-maker in being able to continue to live in Fair Oaks Ranch? And, and so one of the other options that some cities are offering is the deferral of taxes. That is, you're really having needs basis, you can just wait to pay your taxes until you sell your home. And then that takes that cash flow issue out of the picture. But we haven't looked at any of that. And I understand that the council wants to go ahead and move forward with this. Again, my, my objection is not to helping the homeowners out. And, and by the way, I'll benefit too. But I just think we haven't really vetted this thing out to the extent that we should expect of ourselves before we take this action. So that's all I've got. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion.
Mayor, I do have a comment.
Okay. We also have another.
This is just housekeeping. Staff back here pointed out to me that this ordinance is a repealing ordinance. So if we want to keep the $5,000 homestead exemption for qualifying residents, I would call to amend your motion yet again to make sure you call out that 5,000 in addition to the other two.
Mr. Nichols, did you have a comment?
Quick, confused, Rich Nichols, 8115 Windmill Circle. I've been listening to this, and I kind of agree with Councilman Elizondo. And I'm cutting my own throat here because not only am I over 65, I'm disabled. But the way I understand what's going on here is that to provide these exemptions for people like me is going to cut into the budget of the city. Your, your budget is going to be reduced. And to make up for that reduced budget, you're going to have to tax other people or raise the revenue some other way than what we've been doing before, if that's what, that's the way I understand it. What Roy said, I think this is the first reading. I would like to see some more options go into this or, or more discussion before it's passed. Once it's passed, it's fixed. But I think Mr. Elizondo's got some reasonable points that this is a higher socioeconomic community. It's not affordable housing. And I don't know anybody, granted, my social circle is rather limited, but I don't know anybody that is fixing to lose their home because they're having to pay an extra $1,000 worth of taxes. That's just me, and it's just my perspective. But I think Mr. Elizondo's got a point. I would like to see some more, I don't know if the, if the staff has got to do this, or I could sit down with somebody and look into it a little bit further and come up with some other ideas. Am I making any sense here? Once again, I get on a roll here, and I'm, I would like to see more discussion or more options put before us, before we, before we agree to these in the second reading. And I appreciate the council's exemptions, and I can understand, understand where they're coming from. But, well, I just agree with Councilman Elizondo. I'd like to see a little bit more work put into it before we make a, a permanent fix. Just my opinion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nick.
A quick question. With the exemptions, they are not permanent and fixed. Is that correct? Can we clarify that? They can be changed as we so choose. The freezes are fixed, but exemptions are not.
That's correct, and that's, that's the benefit of doing the exemptions.
Yeah.
This council or future councils can evaluate that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I move to amend the motion, to move to add 5,000 exemption for residents' homesteads.
Second.
To the current motion.
Yes.
Second.
We have an amendment to the current motion made by Laura and seconded in by Chesley. The comments on the amended motion. All in favor of approval of the amended motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm just allowing my microphone. If, if I'm understanding that I'm voting to add back that 5,000 for housekeeping reasons, I am an aye on that one.
Okay. Then the amended motion is approved. Now we have a motion on the table to approve the first reading of an ordinance in amending ad valorem tax exemptions as follows. $5,000 exemption for resident homesteads. Two, an amount equal to the greater of 10% or $50,000 exemption for residents aged 65 and older. And three, an amount equal to the greater of 10% or $50,000 exemption for residents qualifying as disabled. Any other discussion from council? Now we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
We have a vote of four to one, and with that, current motion is approved. With that, we'll move on to the second consideration item that we have tonight, was consideration and the possible action approving the first reading of an ordinance adopting a tax freeze. And this is for qualifying disabled homesteads and/or individuals over the age of 65. Rebecca Tobin covered most of this earlier.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and congratulations on that last item. That's, that's a significant move, and there's a lot of work that's been put into that by council, so appreciate your support. This particular item is consideration, possible action approving the first reading of an ordinance adopting a tax freeze for qualifying disabled homesteads. Way the agenda and ordinance is worded, it also gives you the option, if you so, if so choose to make a motion, to include a tax freeze for five and older qualifying as well. All the revenue projections, change in, in tax burden, information is provided in the supporting material. And again, we'll be happy to answer any questions you have. The way the motion is worded, it says an ordinance adopting a limitation on the ad valorem taxation, same thing as a freeze. And so the voice here is, do you want to do it? Qualifying 65 and over.
Any questions from council? Any questions or comments from anybody here tonight? From the council's position, is there anybody that's looking at considering the tax freeze individuals over the age of 65? Primarily what we're looking at would be a tax freeze related to disabled qualifying individuals.
I can make that motion if you want. I move to approve the first reading of an ordinance adopting a limitation on the ad valorem taxation of residents' homestead of disabled individuals for tax years commencing in 2022.
I second.
Laura and Roy? Any other comments from, from council? With that, then we'll go ahead and vote on the, the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes 5-0. Thought I saw him come in. Earlier in the meeting, we did defer one of our presentation items. And so with the completion of our consideration and discussion items, we'll move on to it. Under presentation, we had the Highway Safety Improvement Program, potential opportunities available for the city of Fair Oaks Ranch. And Grant, you're going to kick this off?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Council members, Grant Watanabe, Director of Public Works and Engineering Services. So I'll, I'll kick this off, and then I'll turn it over to Mike Garza to talk about some of the program details. But first of all, I want to mention that we do have a unique opportunity here to participate in the Highway Safety Improvement Program. Back in June 2020, we did turn down funding from this program, and that was primarily because of the uncertainty related to COVID-19 and the impact on the city's budget. There's a cost share shortage associated with some of the projects in this program, and then at that time, that cost share was significant. Since then, there's been some changes to the program to lessen the cost share, and there's also been some other changes as well. Some of the uncertainty related to the pandemic has passed, and we've returned to some degree of normalcy. We've also approved a CIP project to reconstruct Ammon Road to include and incorporate some of the safety features that were part of this proposed project. We also know that the Kendall County, Burnie, Fair Oaks Ranch Transportation Committee has evaluated a whole list of projects, and this, they do plan to include this project specifically to soften the curves on, curves on Ammon Road as one of their recommended projects. And lastly, why are we, why is this coming back to us? And it's specifically because there was a project that San Antonio had that has fallen through making about 3.6 million available under this program. So while I understand why the funding was turned down a couple of years ago, I do also know that a lot has changed since that time. So at this point, and throughout this presentation, we're just going to ask for, to ask to gauge your interest in whether we want to pursue it at this time. There's no commitment at this point, anyway. We're still going through the exploratory steps, so there's no commitment until we get to actually signing an advanced funding agreement with TaxDOT. That's kind of like step five in this process, and we're just at step two right now. And there is a slide included in this slide deck presentation that Mike will go over that includes a description of all those steps. All right? And with that, I'll turn it over to Mike Garza.
Wasn't working earlier, is it?
I'll just let you know. I need a new slide. Okay. I guess while, while we're getting that set up, I, I want to apologize about my attire. I don't know if you guys were informed or not, my son is in the Little League playoffs right now, so we're pretty excited about that. And they were in the bottom of the fourth inning when I left. And I just got a text day one, so that was pretty cool. So sorry, I'm coach, so yeah, sorry about all this.
Congratulations.
Thank you, yeah. Beat the Rockies. That was good. Yeah, it's working now. Thank you so much. Thank you very, very much for accommodating this issue on timing. Thank you for moving this to the end of the council meeting today. I really greatly appreciate that. I didn't want to miss the opportunity to sit down with you guys and talk about these really awesome opportunities that the city has in front of us today. This is 100% meant as a presentation for open discussion. Let's, let's kind of make sure we're on the same page and see if this is something council wants to pursue. And then we want to help guide council and staff if that's the direction you choose to move forward in and some of these funding opportunities. So I want to make sure that we all understand the Highway Safety Improvement Program as a whole. I believe only three of you were here for the last presentation, so I figured I'd go ahead and, and take an overview of the program itself. So we're, we're all in agreement with what expectations are on either end. The Highway Safety Improvement Program, otherwise known as HSIP, is, is an opportunity for us through the federal government and the state of Texas to receive safety improvement dollars that can benefit our local community. I'm going to talk about that program and about the $3.6 million that Grant recently discussed. I'm going to talk about individual opportunities that we have that are both specific project-related, targeted, and systematic, I'm sorry, systemic improvements. And then I'll go over some next steps if you guys decide to move forward with this, this option. So as I mentioned, it's a federal aid program. It's aimed at trying to enhance safety, both on, on, on state infrastructure and on local government municipality infrastructure. The, the main point of the HSIP for many years was, it was a kind of a retroactive, reactionary type of program to where if there were some serious accidents, fatalities, or major serious injuries at, at a location, the program gave municipalities like Fair Oaks Ranch or the state of Texas ways to try to prevent that from happening again. They were very targeted approaches, again, at reactionary measures. They, I'm going to talk about some changes that have happened in terms of trying to be a little bit more proactive and systemic in, in these recommendations. And that's something that's fairly new for the program. So as I mentioned, prior to 2020, there were 25 TaxDOT districts that act as a, acted as a segue, if you will, between the federal funds and state and local dollars that came down. And all 25 districts were essentially jockey for position in arm wrestle to try to get the most projects as possible. What ended up happening is a lot of, a lot of districts were just applying for as many products as they can put on paper in the hopes that they would get selected for those projects. There was not a true systematic approach on how to enhance safety throughout our, our state, so they decided to, to change it up a little bit. What they, what they're doing now, what the federal program does now, is each district is assigned a, a budget specifically tailor-fitted for the number of people, for the safety aspects, for the infrastructure they have in place. So San Antonio, for example, is a district that we fall under. There's 12 counties, and obviously there's a bunch of municipalities, just like Fair Oaks Ranch, that fall within that district. And everybody within this district qualifies for various forms of funding. And San Antonio District's in charge of allocating that funding. As Grant mentioned earlier, the city of San Antonio recently had $3.6 million approved for Calabria Road. They were going to enhance, there's a lot, if you watch the news anytime at night, Kay said, it seems like there's always a pedestrian getting hit on Calabria Road or Frexport Road. There's just a lot of bad situations out there. So San Antonio pursued funding, they got $3.6 million awarded to them. But when the bond program got passed, was it May the 2nd, whatever day it was, they got a larger amount of money for their bond program to, I think it was 20 million or so, allocated to handle all of that Calabria Road corridor. So rather than focusing on a small stretch, which is the 3.6 million, the city decided to forego those funds and say, we'll just handle it with our $20 million budget that we just got approved. That being said, we got a call from TaxDOT, since we had previously approved projects that we declined to move forward with, we got a call from TaxDOT, and they basically said, hey, if you guys are interested, you already have approved products on the books, we can go back and reauthorize those, get the ball rolling again, and you can help the citizens of Fair Oaks Ranch enhance safety. It's that simple. If we do not want to move forward, which you don't have to make a decision today, but if we do not want to move forward, we feel like as, as staff, we need to at least let TaxDOT know because they want to reach out to other entities and let them know if there's an opportunity to use that funding, whether it's us, Saguin, Burnie, whoever, Bear County, someone else may want to use those funds. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry to interrupt, Mike, because I just wanted to get my head set in the historical part of it. Because what I remember is the last time this was bought up. There was one of the curves on Ammon Road that there was some funds available for. And then there was also some work on Diet Cell Corn, specifically a, a turnabout on the, at the intersection of Diet Cell Corn and the Parkway. So that turnaround is not, that, that, that circle is not in this. But there are now some other kinds of safety enhancements. And when you said that, TaxDOT said we already had some approved projects, are they talking about the stuff that's in the presentation here? That scope of work is, those funds are available to do everything that's in this packet?
So I'll try and best answer the question. The way it's been described to me from TaxDOT representatives and also with Grant, we were on a call talking about this, because we had our foot in the door essentially with, with that AFA draft work already in place and different products already in place. different products already in place, they're reaching back out to us as a first step for them. If we want to reinvigorate those specific projects again, we can. If we want to expand them and do more with them, we can. If we want to do systemic or targeted approaches or different projects, we can. The district's main concern is if they don't use those $3.6 million, it looks bad on them because they had allocated budget that was not utilized, never brought to fruition.
So the challenge to us is to, number one, determine whether we want to commit to some list of projects, and then, number two, is to figure out what we think those are. In other words, we're not locking in to something like a turnabout on Dietzel Corn and the Parkway, because, again, it's not even in here at this point.
In a few minutes, I'm going to go over different opportunities, and you're absolutely correct. We're not locked into anything. We can say no to everything. We can say yes to everything. There's different, we can come up with a new project.
Okay.
It's really up to us. Yes, ma'am.
I'm going back into my memory here, because we've actually talked about this three or four different times, even well before 2022. So from what I understand, when this whole program first came about, TaxDOT asked us to look at intersections in our city that could potentially meet the requirements of this program. And at that time, Ron determined there was two potential areas that could meet the requirements of this program. I was not aware that they were submitted as official projects for quote-unquote approval because the city council at that time agreed not to go forward with either of those and request funding. Then they came back again in 2022, when money came back, and they asked again, and we said no again. So now we're back again, asking about the same, excuse me, 2020, asking about the same projects again, and there hasn't been any more accidents. So I'm wondering why we would want to work on these projects?
I guess with all due respect, do you mind if I just go through the presentation?
Yeah, exactly. So I'm just, I'm just asking, how did our projects get on TaxDOT's radar? You said approved. Is that because originally, back then, when they asked us to look for projects that potentially met the requirements, those were the only two that we submitted at the time?
I think the simplest way I can put it is the district is looking for municipalities that want to enhance safety for their citizens. Whether it was approved or not, or what year it was, or whatever happened in the past, we were once at that table.
And they're asking us to come back?
They're asking us, hey, are you guys, and if we'd say no, they've got plenty of other people that want these funds. So it's really a matter of if we want to kind of have first dibs, if you will.
But there are strict requirements, so it's not like we could take our most high road project and just use money for that. It would have to have met certain requirements in order for us to use it.
Yes, ma'am, which I'll go over right now. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. These are great questions. Thank you. And if I don't answer any of these questions as I go through it, please stop me again. So in the past, it was very much a targeted approach based on a calculation. So to answer your question, Counselor, it was very much, you had to have a specific injury or a specific accident or a specific location that you wanted to mitigate for. That was the old targeted approach. It's no longer like that, and that's why so many doors have opened up to us. Now, there's a systemic submission in which you don't have to have any crashes. We, as a community, can say, hey, I know I've seen plenty of people running off the road over here on this curve, even though there haven't been any crashes, it's a matter of time before someone gets hurt, or a kid on their phone runs through the fence, or gets injured, or gets killed. We don't want that to happen, so we can be proactive now with this new systemic approach. The way the funding works, I know you've heard this before, but I want to make sure we're all on the same page. It's if the large majority of products that are covered are covered at 90% of construction. So real simple math here, a million-dollar project, you're going to be 900,000 coming from the federal government, 100,000 would come from us. That's our portion. That's our match, the 10%. And then we would also cover any of the engineering and indirect costs for the project, which I'll go over an example here in a minute. There is a new category that they just released in the 2022 update, which is a G-match, which moves everything up to 100% coverage. 100% coverage of construction. We still are liable for engineering, for indirect costs, and for other administrative costs. The G-match concept only applies to these bulleted items here. If we have an intersection that we feel is needing a traffic signal, which nowadays is about 400,000, it's getting pretty expensive, they will cover that 100%. Traffic circles, otherwise known as roundabouts, you know, it's not in the presentation, but if we wanted to look at Deets and Fair Oaks Parkway again, that would be covered at 100%. Pavement markings, if there's some sort of enhancements we want to bring to the table with pavement markings, any sort of traffic lights, guardrails, impact attenuators, any sort of curves we're treating, a lot of that stuff now, we all know that we can enhance safety. So the federal government's trying to tell us, hey, I'll cover this one at 100 versus the 90. It's not much of a difference. The gap's only 10%, but it just shows you the commitment that they have to safety. Again, we've talked about Ammon Road before, and for whatever reason, I know we did not move forward with it. There was a lot of previous discussions on it. When we looked at it initially in 2018, and matter of fact, that's, I was at TaxDOT at that time, when this was brought to the table, there was only one serious accident where the individual got airlifted. But when we spoke to the property owner on the corner, when we spoke to different people that drive this corridor every day, and when we went out there ourselves and looked at the site, you can see the tire marks of many people going off the road. The only thing is, they don't report those accidents all the time. So I imagine whether there's one serious accident or multiple that we don't know about, we want to be proactive in trying to mitigate this safety concern. This is what we initially submitted. I say we, this is what the city of Fair Oaks Ranch initially submitted. The concept here on the top, I don't know if you can see the laser pointer or not, but on the top right of your screen here, there's about 20 feet of pavement, right, 10-foot lanes in each direction. Our goal would be to widen those lanes to 11- to 12-foot lanes, and then to have an outside shoulder as well of at least four feet. That would enable us, I don't know if you're used to driving Route Fair Road here, when you go out to the outside, you could have those rumble strips or those edge line. That wakes up a lot of people from head-on collisions. That wakes up a lot of people from going off the road when they're on their phone or doing something they shouldn't be doing. That would be the goal here, to try to add some sort of safety measure and forgiveness on the outside shoulder to kind of wake people up from going off the road. We, in the past, met with Kendall County, if you guys recall. I was actually at, when I first started working for y'all as the GEC, I went to Kendall County Commissioners' Court and discussed the project. At the time, Kendall County was 100% on board with the project. They supported the overall idea of moving forward, and also, they supported cost-sharing mechanisms as well. They knew that something had to be done on this curve, and they were willing to come to the table and work with us. This is just from March 2020 Commissioners' Court reading, where they voted 5-0 in favor of moving forward and further coordinating with us as a city. Obviously, that all kind of died out with the COVID pandemic. The idea that we wanted to bring to the table here today, initially, we were asking for, I believe it was roughly 980,000, I believe, on this curve, maybe a little bit less, but it wasn't quite a million dollars. What we're thinking about doing now is, since we have this larger pot of money that's going to sit there and get lost if it doesn't get used, what we're thinking is, why not try to take advantage of not only enhancing this right curve you see here on the screen, but also the other curve on the left side of the screen, and let's go ahead and fix Ammon Road in between as well. And the goal there is to take our project that's already approved in our CIP, and instead of using our taxpayer dollars for it, let's use the federal government's incentive here to use their program instead, save our folks some money. Go ahead.
I would just interject that those federal dollars are our tax dollars that went to Washington, and we just want them back.
I said that wrong. I apologize. Yes, sir. So I wanted to pull this up again, just to remind council of what we previously approved as a group here. We know that, I believe Julio gave a presentation earlier on PCIs and LCI's and how we score our roads. We know that Ammon Road is essentially a roller coaster as you drive through. There's potholes, there's ups and downs. There's too much for us to be able to fix without full debt reconstruction. So we've recommended to y'all in the past, and y'all have approved a CIP that includes $241,000 of engineering this year and next fiscal year, including the hopes of having a bond program or some other form of taxpayer dollars from the city, whether it's general debt obligation or whatever we can find to fund this. But we know we need roughly $4.8 million of construction. We have a total estimated cost in our current CIP that you'll find online right now on our website of $5.5 million. Our goal is to try to reduce that number and not have to use it directly from our budget and rather use this program if possible. Other potential systemic improvements, and we may like all of these, we may not want any of them. It's really up to you guys. Illumination and safety lighting is a proven reduction, and when it comes to safety, it's a proven reduction factor to mitigate safety. It's proven from a, also from just general crime rates. It always improves the situation when you have additional illumination. From an aesthetic theme, illumination always helps. We may or may not want that on our corridors. Is Dietzel Corn the corridor we want lit up from a safety standpoint at dawn and dusk hours? Is Fair Oaks Parkway something we would want lit up? It's up to you guys 100%. We can say no to that, or we can look at this as a potential systemic improvement if we wanted some sort of safety lighting throughout those corridors. Rumble strips on any sort of stop-controlled approaches, if we have a situation where, I'm thinking of like Pimlico, where you're coming up to Route Fair Road, if you want to slow people down and give them a heads up, you can give them some rumble strips, and that could be paid for 100% by the program. Installation of any sort of roadside flashers or embedded LEDs on signs. I know we have a couple of those around town. Those are, sometimes get up to $5,000, $10,000. So if we can get enough of those in place and take that out of our own maintenance budget, that would only help us at a staff level. Systemically treating any sort of curves, intersection to head warning signs, pedestrian treatments, any sort of push-button assemblies or pedestrian hybrid beacons. And that last one is great as well. We have a lot of roadways that we want to keep our rural aesthetic theme, our rural guideline, but it doesn't help, it doesn't hurt us, I should say, to go from 20, 22 feet of pavement that's really unsafe to 24, 28 feet of pavement. We can keep our same general theme as a city, but get a little bit more pavement that otherwise would have, you know, hopefully prevented some sort of accident from occurring. We took a look between 2018 and 2020. Yes, yes, sir?
Mike, quick question. You know, like on that opportunity, like expanding the pavement from 22 feet to maybe up to 28 feet, we have a lot of these roads, and I would include Amen on that, that we have people that want to ride their bikes on there. Would that, you know, I know we're not talking about bike lanes per se, but would that significantly also enhance the safety for people that want to use those roads for biking?
Without a doubt. Yes, sir. Yeah, and any additional pavement would definitely help. Yes, sir. Targeted improvements, we took a look at that to see if there was anything that would qualify for that same concept I discussed earlier in terms of reacting to issues that we see. You see the bullet points here in blue. I think it's like a yellowish-orange color, and unfortunately, the red fatality along some of our facilities. We didn't see any true trends that needed to be established, or I guess mitigated for. There's just a lot of accidents that are unfortunate, but it did open up some opportunities. If there's something y'all see on here, or something staff sees as we continue to move forward, we can move forward potentially with mitigating some of these locations if deemed applicable. The fatal injury that occurred on October of 2020, that particular segment of Silver Spur Road here that you can see, contributing factors that we found in the police report stated driver inattention, fatigue, or sleep, wrong side, not passing. Of course, we all know what happened. It's in a very sad and unfortunate situation where there was a head-on collision there. If there's something we can do through this program, this is definitely an opportunity and the time to do so along this segment of roadway. So potential countermeasures that the targeted approach would allow for is widening of the roadway, constructing paved shoulders, as we talked about before, any sort of centerline striping or edge line markings, centerline markings or chevrons potentially. So again, whether that comes out of our own manual maintenance budget, or whether that's something we use the program for, we have some opportunities available to us. I wanted to discuss that Ammon Road safety enhancement, the one that I showed earlier that had the two different curves and the four-foot outside shoulders through that stretch. Very high-level estimate based on some high-level math that we ran. I was thinking that this may be around $3 million, so I wanted to use a whole number to make the math a little simple here for a potential scenario. You can see, I don't know if this has a laser, I guess not, sorry. You can see on the second row, the construction cost estimated at $3 million. That would be split up by federal participation at 90%, which is 2.7 million, and then 10% of that would be on the local participation match of $300,000. The engineering, which is that top row, at 15%, which is a conservative estimate, you're talking $450,000 out of that 3 million, being that 15% number. And just, I'm going to put this out there right away, just so no one thinks that this is our way as your GEC to create work for ourselves. We already have consultants on board that we've negotiated with that would do this work. It wouldn't be us. It wouldn't be myself. Wouldn't be Legacy. This is purely our way of trying to help you guys enhance safety for our community. So that 450,000 would most likely go to one of our consultants that we already have signed up and on contract and ready to start day one, which is great news. We can start right away. Environmental direct costs, right-of-way direct costs, engineering direct costs, and utility direct costs. It's another way of saying, that's the state's way of saying, we need some money to monitor the contract, to pay their individual employees to keep track and make sure that we have all of our ducks in a row and our paperwork in order. So all those direct and indirect costs that you see there are the state's kind of middleman version of getting that funding from us to monitor the contract on their end. And the last item there is the indirect state costs, which is roughly 5.33%, so $159,000 that would be allocated to the state. Overall, again, on a $4 million project, we'd be saving 74% of those costs on our community, and that's what I really want to take away to be here. Anytime someone's telling you, I'll give you a 75% sale on a product that we all need and want, I don't know many people that'd walk away from that. So I want to make sure that we consider the savings for our community here and the benefits for our community. Opportunity two is the various targeted and systemic safety enhancements that I previously discussed. We wanted to have this meeting and put this in front of y'all as a discussion item before we go digging and looking for opportunities. We definitely don't want to look for, I think someone said this last time, looking for a problem that you have a solution for. We want to make sure that you guys tell us what your problems are, and let's come up with solutions. So that's the point of, yes. So I want to make sure we're on the same page here. You tell us what direction to move in. You tell us what to look for. You tell us where the concerns are, and we'll see if this program matches. The key takeaways, again, you've hired, I guess, myself as your GEC to look for ways to enhance the safety and welfare of our community. This is a great opportunity for us to do so. We have a unique opportunity where $3.6 million of funding has literally landed on our lap, and it's up to us if we want to use it or not. If we don't, it's perfectly fine, but I hope we do to help our citizens out. And last but not least, we've already approved a bond, hopefully, general obligation debt, or hopefully, a voter-approved bond program that we want to move forward with. We know we have concerns, and this funding can help us alleviate some of those numbers. Next step, sort of identify those projects that may qualify, approve to get into the weeds on, I should have said this earlier, I'm sorry. If we overrun a project, if we say that example I had earlier at 3 million, if it ends up being 5 million, guess who's responsible for that overrun? That's us. So it's very important that we have very detailed engineering up front, and before we submit that AFA, we know, kind of, we have some contingency involved, and we know what a worst-case scenario is for a project. So I'd highly recommend, if we decide to move forward, that's where we need to spend a lot of time up front, making sure that we have the right budget for these products so we don't overrun them. Once we assign those potential projects and we prioritize them, we would get with TaxDOT, let them know that we're ready and willing to move forward and start working on an AFA agreement. The key here is the date to let this project, which means the plans have to be complete for it to go to actual letting, is August of 2023. So we have a little over a year, which, trust me, it's fast, but it's not impossible. Most of the times in scenarios like this, it takes months to get engineers on board, consultants on board. We've already bypassed that. We already have consultants ready to rock and roll. It takes months to get people in place that know how to work through this language. I, myself, and employees at Legacy Engineering Group, or former TaxDOT employees, we know what paperwork needs to get done to get this project moving forward, so we can help the city with that as a staff augmentation. So we're in a good spot. I want you all to know, I'm confident that if you decide to move forward, we can bring this to fruition successfully. But again, it's up to you guys 100%. Yes, yes, sir.
So Mike, is there any part of this that's like the first person to the trough gets the money?
I will be honest with you. So TaxDOT is waiting on us to come back after this meeting tonight to tell them, to give them a gauge of how we feel. They've asked Grant and I to say, if we're moving forward, please let us know. We're going to count on you guys to use this funding. If you're not moving forward and council says no way, no how, let me know, because I got 10 other people I need to call tomorrow. So I'm really hoping we'll have some positive feedback today, tonight. Yes, sir.
All right. I guess the question is, Ammon Road, it seems at the top of the discussion right now, but could we go back and say, yeah, we're interested in other projects? Weren't we getting, looking really hard at Silver Spur anyway? So far as road condition, and it was going to be a major investment to bring Silver Spur?
Yeah, we did have, we did have four roads that we were looking at for the bond project. If you recall, we called them the Rat Roads, Roll Akers, Ammon. So, yeah, Post Oak, so there was a few of them. Silver Spur, I don't believe, was on there. We just redid Silver Spur with the last bond project. We did widen that road. There isn't as many buttons, but it is something we are looking at, so. Post, we do have Post Oak on there as one of the roads that we'd be looking at.
It's all those north, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's a couple of roads back out in that area that I just know from being on them. And when you're on a bike, okay, quite frankly, you're bouncing a car, but when you're on the bike, you get, you're a little bit closer to the pavement, and I get to see some condition. And I think it's Post Oak. I mentioned Silver Spur. I think it's, I think it's Post Oak is the one I'm talking about.
It's probably Post Oak is the one you're thinking of, and we did talk about, hopefully, doing a future bond, Post Oak, Roll Akers Trail, Ammon. Those were all part of that.
Is there a way to move something like that as one of the roads that we're looking into using?
Definitely. So there's a totally clean slate here. If there's an opportunity to bring up a new project, TaxDOT's willing to listen to us.
I think we've heard, some of us have heard from people that don't necessarily believe that Ammon, that the curves on Ammon need to be adjusted because they're afraid of turning it into a speedway. Once the Once, once the curve. However, free money is free money. I'm all about free money. Lessening the burden on the city, that just makes sense.
It's taxpayer money, just.
It's just getting our money back, getting our money back.
We're also paying a million for it.
So, very enlightening presentation. Thank you so much. I didn't quite get that from reading it, and I'm glad you clarified. We're in a completely different situation now than we were back originally. We now have a CIP. We know what the projects we need to do. We already have things identified, and we're already looking for a way to fund a lot of them. So, like you're saying, we still have to pay a million dollars, but we were already going to pay in our, however much it was going to cost in our CIP, which is going to be through a bond or whatever. So, my mind has changed. I'm willing to look at, with an open slate for projects for this. I think this is, this is an opportunity that's different than before, and appreciate you bringing that forward.
Yes, ma'am.
Leslie.
I'll say I'm kind of with Laura. When I read the presentation, I got a completely different idea of what you were asking and what we were deciding, not necessarily deciding, but giving direction on tonight. I'll say a couple of things that you may, on the slide where we talk about Kendall County, and it's page 39, that the Kendall County participation, it seems like that you indicated that that may have been talked about in 2022, but from the presentation, I read preliminary discussions with Kendall County point towards support of funding. So I was thinking that was current, that you had talked to them recently. So I'm assuming that is not the case. It was back in 2020 from the back next slide?
Yeah, I apologize. No, the intent was that we were all onboard and then it all just kind of stopped.
Okay, I was going to say, because I contacted three commissioners after I read this, thinking, oh, that's interesting, and they've all said that there's no funding in Kendall County for projects.
Yes, yeah, we told them everything was, at one point, I recall, the commissioner for, I think it was Elkins, for this precinct, at one point, he said, you know what, y'all may have killed it, but we're going to try to keep it going. I don't think they did, but I know there was definitely some intention to keep the conversation going.
Okay, yeah, I just, I just wanted to kind of clarify that, and I had a lot of questions. Grant answered a bunch for me, so thank you, thank you for that. And so I think I won't go into all of them, being that it's not a specific project-based. But some of the concerns I had surrounding the Ammon Road is before I would go forward with wanting to say I would move forward and want to prove a project, you know, I'd want to know if we were going to have to use eminent domain to take land for the four feet on each side, because it's a very narrow street. Is it going to be four feet through the entire part of Fair Oaks Ranch? Because on that, it looks curve-to-curve, but we still own past down to like the GBRA, so are we just doing this specific portion, or would it be the whole Fair Oaks Ranch portion? So again, I'm not going to sit here and be a stickler, because it seems like we can look at different projects, which I appreciate, but I would have a lot of concerns thinking it was just specifically for this project.
Yeah, and if you guys decide to move forward with further vetting these, we would look at all those details and try to come up with the best-case scenario. If we see fatal flaws or issues with the job, then we move on to the next. It's not worth it. So we want to make sure it's something that's feasible and truly within budget.
So just, just for clarification, Tobin, are we looking for tonight that whether the council supports moving forward with exploring this opportunity? Is that all the feedback y'all need for tonight? We're not picking projects or anything, right, okay.
So really, I had a question related to the same. So what does that mean that we're, we are interested? Obviously, if you have $3.6 million on the table, we're interested. We do have other, from my perspective, we have other areas that should be considered along with the Ammon Road for, could we spend the $3.6 million in these areas? And so when I look at it, my thoughts are in that line, is that I'd like to have some review of what the current projects that are available out there that would meet the requirements for the 3.6 in addition to Ammon Road. For example, is, we're looking at the Chartwell realignment right here, but we're not making changes to detail corn within that area. Would that be an area that we qualify? Just an example, just put something out there. And then with that, you know, if we had potential funding along with that so that we can make the determinations. In this case, you know, it is a million dollars that we would have to contribute on the Ammon Road project, which is something we'd have to seriously consider as part of our budget coming up in, here in a couple of months. So, a lot of thought process for us, and then related to that, how quick would TechDOT need an answer back on which specific project we wanted to go with before they give us the axe and say they're going to give the money to somebody else?
Yes, sir. Best way I can answer your question is, so the purpose of today is to make sure that you want us to continue vetting this potential scenario, right? I think out of respect to TechDOT, we've already said no before. If we were to say no today, that's fine, they'd move on, they'd find someone else. It sounds to me like we're deciding to move forward to vet options. Next steps for us would be to sit down and work with staff and find out what is realistic, what is feasible, what's our budget, can it be done, can it not be done? And I would want to present that to y'all again before we give TechDOT an official yea or nay. Because who knows, maybe we do all that, and for whatever reason, you're not happy with the projects, who knows? So I think there's another step we have to go down to prioritize this situation, establish what's truly applicable, see if you guys are onboard with it, and I can just, we can always let TechDOT know that by the next council meeting, we'll hope to have some.
Being that is, we would consider different projects and review that as part of the budget, is that?
We'd have to, yes, sir, yeah. Because we'd have to commit, once we start talking about AFA, we'd have to commit certain dollars upfront, especially for the engineering. So I don't want to answer on Tobin's part, but I would imagine before we get back with TechDOT and start working on AFA, we want to make sure that y'all have the budget.
I just wanted to make sure the thought process or the ideals of what our next steps need to be. In my case, I'm looking at it and thinking, we need to review projects. We need to narrow the scope, and what is it that we, that we want to push for as part of the city, as part of this program?
I agree. Yes, sir.
So, yeah, so just to make sure I understand, it sounds like what we're going to do is come up with a list of projects that could qualify for this federal funding, prioritize those, and then basically make a choice, but that's like further down the path. The thing that we're trying to do tonight, say, we want to explore, because I think we're going to end up with more opportunities than there's going to be dollars. And so we'll want to go through that process of just kind of saying, here's the qualified projects, here's the ones that council would like to pursue from a practicability and affordability from the part that we have to fund. And then, but that's like step, I forget your chart there, but that's like two or three, or step four, or something in that range. Right now, we just need to, you need to get a clear signal from us that we're interested in pursuing this approach.
Exactly, yes, sir.
And I don't know, we don't need to vote on that, do we, Mr. Mayor?
Good enough?
Yes, perfect. Thank you guys so much for your time. Really appreciate it.
Congratulations on your son's game. That completes the presentations and the consideration discussion items that we had tonight. Moving on to requests and announcements, are there any announcements or reports that would be provided by any of the council members? I don't have anything else. Tobin, any announcements that you have as a city manager? And do any of the other council members have any items that they want added to a future agenda?
I don't know if this is really an agenda item, but I guess I would like to maybe have us at some point, and Tobin, maybe staff needs to kind of roll this around, but I want to call it some kind of communication plan, if not a town hall, but could include a town hall on just the opportunity to get the community kind of a refresh of information of where we are on the road programs and stormwater, because that was brought up in that correspondence, and it seems like there's an opportunity for us to give the community a refresh on where we are on all that, because we've done quite a bit of work recently. Thank you.
Roy, are you just asking for an update as part of the council meeting?
I guess what I'm asking for is for staff to maybe look at some kind of communication plan around that, maybe bring it back to council to look at. I realize that we're getting ready to do all the heavy lifting for budget season, so I take that into account, but I think, you know, if we could get around to something like that, it probably would actually help inform the community about some of the things that I'm sure are going to be in the budget that are going to require significant funding, so.
We are going to go into executive session tonight. Is there anything that we need to discuss or best prior to go into executive session? Pursuant to Section 551.101 of the Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code of Quorum of the Governing Body hereby does convene into the closed session. We'll do this under Section 551.071, Consultation with Attorney. Reference to receive legal advice from special counsel and the city attorney regarding the city's groundwater rights. Or two, Cause Number 2022 Charlie 1011978. Reference Burning Ranch Estates LLC versus City of Fair Oaks Ranch. Or three, Cause Number 22-090-451. Reference Vincida Calderola MD versus City of Fair Oaks Ranch. Possibly also Section 551.072, Deliberation Regarding Real Property. The city council will meet in closed session to deliberate the purchase, exchange, or lease of value of real property that may be considered future location of water and wastewater improvement systems. And then last, Section 551.074, Personal Matters to Review Objectives Surrounding Evaluation of the City Manager. And Christine, I have the time now, it is 8:28, and we are moving into executive session. And Christine, I have the time now, is 8:28, and we are moving into executive session.
Christine, I have the time now is ten sixteen and council is out of executive session and at ten sixteen back into open session. City council did meet in executive session but took no actions that would require a discussion and consideration during open session. Christine, is there anything else that we missed or we need to cover tonight?
Not even ordered breakfast.
Hoping anything from you. All right, I have the time now is still ten sixteen and we are, time now is ten seventeen and we are adjourned.
Why it's not...